A little bit closer to here than you're at. We have a new microphone on and we still want. Danielle.
Um, I think it's about meeting for the start of the pledge to the planet. My pledge is to the planet, United States of America, in order to develop a cooperative stance on education, under our individual liberty and justice ground. I'd like to move to accept the agenda for tonight. Second, any discussion? All those in there?
Yes.
So. I would like, um, we have any. On to the reports. Policy review committee on this tent, we need an update on the policy committee that are not. This is going to be our first one, so tonight we're just going to do the second of the goals of the eight thousand and then I'll finish our manual review of those and then we'll start fresh on the tenth with the ones from Boses and then we'll start with the new section for the end. And. James, we have a work session coming up on August tenth and then a facilities committee meeting on August eighteenth. Is there anything for the facilities committee that we're putting there? We're meeting with the department and local construction next week. We have some projects, but we've made a meeting that we are continuing on.
Would you need to take the second page of the papers or? If I'm going to go to Francis, hopefully they'll be.
Uh, we have a regular board meeting on August twenty-fourth next month. Um, all the administrative reports for the schools were submitted electronically. The, Dr. Klein, do you have an update on regular? I defer given the amount of time and the focus that we'll be spending on the reopening work tonight. Everything. Uh, Dr. Rucko.
We are going to shortly, um, the next beginning, we're going to do a quick audit because we, uh, part of it that I submitted to the auditors for internal audit and then we will have the external auditors from the end of August. We're going to be working, I'm going to be working on the transparency report for our budget. In addition, um, you're going to see today, we're going to go over the safety plans. Um, the safety plan, we're going to review the district safety plan, something during the regular meeting and then we're going to discuss the building plans and then everything else is going to be. Thank you. Mr. Chris Eric.
I'm going to defer to the multiple things that I want to present regarding reopenings. I will say that the administrative, the administrators might have retrieved yesterday, Thursday. And I was very proud of what that has accomplished around the reopening. It's extensive, it's detailed and midstream, we were forced to realign how we were going to approach starting at the very first onset of school here as a result of changing guidance on Wednesday. And for the planning, we got to provide on Wednesday night at night. So the administrators did a great job of that, working steadfastly in their buildings to. Have those plans, but I'm talking about.
Thank you. Boy, remember, um, if we do it, yeah, here, presentation, we could move that.
You're right.
Yeah. I re-. Do you have to amend the agenda? No, I just. Um, presentation, the district five emergency plan presentation, Dr. Rucko.
This is one thing that I got a problem with.
For the projector?
Yes.
I got it right here. All right.
That's what I'm thinking. It always goes off. There we go. And you can just.
Give me my cell phone line. So this may be one of the shortest presentations that you've had in a very long time because you've already been sent the district plan, it's going to be posted online and almost nothing has changed from year to year. Just kind of interesting in light of everything that's going on in the world, but it, it shows that what was in the original plan really was, was viable, not really detailed, very general, but the same procedures and practices will follow. So the components of this AP plan are really team identification. If there's a crisis, if something happens, who are the go-to people? How does information disseminate? Who calls whom? Then training drills and exercises. The plan goes over the required ones mandated, how many have it each building, what type, however you run. Implementation of school security, early detection of violent behaviors. And that's kind of a little FAQ sheet really. Hazard identification and then hazard identification is where the plan gets really kind of complex because it goes into sound and what you would do with each one of those circumstances. Notification again, would you notify in each instance? So it's going to be different depending on what your hazard is. So in one instance, you might call Department of Health and another you might call local police. Um, activation, whose job is it to make the calls? How, how does that get done? And then coordination of resources. Um. Adoption of this plan, it's approved annually. It has a thirty day open comment period for the public, so this will be placed on our website and the public will have thirty days to submit comments, um, one public hearing, which is today, and then it will be approved hopefully and posted on our website. The bill, now the district plan is a public document, so it remains on our website. The building level plans, which actually has schematics of the building. So changes for this year, um, our administrators names are updated and we added some programs that we purchased through the year, um, for social emotional programming and learning, and those are really the only changes to this year's. What I did give you as a handout, you'll see this, it is the human disease, communicable disease page. So when I talk about the different hazards and the epidemic pandemic, and I thought it would just be interesting to review these if you want to take us, you have these in the document, but just so you see when we go through our plan for our reentry plan, that these do align with that and our procedures align with what we said we would do in our safety plan. So that's really the only reason I handed these out to you, so you can kind of see that this is a general view of what would happen. When we get into our reentry plan, we're going to be much more specific. Questions? For those that are new to this, um, we work very closely with Tom Waack, who is our safety person at Dairy to Boses. And he really helps walk us through a lot of these. So at a district level, our, while our plan is unique to us, it's not really, it's not, it's not a lot different than other school districts because we would all do the same thing in different situations.
How far have we gotten with the ID system, building entry of these?
So Raptor, we have at one building and quite frankly, with all of the budget cuts we had this year, we did not make it into the other building session, that was a bit of a disappointment. We are still keeping it and maintaining it at the middle school. You know, unfortunately, all of our extra funds this year are going to be going towards buying other safety items for students related to the pandemic.
How, how did it work while, I mean, how is it working in the worst?
It's working well. We haven't, you know, I mean, the goal is you hope that you never really have to use it. And I think we haven't had big instances where we've had to yet, um, but it's, you know, it's working well. People are coming in. We have everything posted right at the door about what the procedure is, so we haven't had too many questions or arguments about why, why, and you guys, we, it's been very good. I think people are getting used to that just from seeing it in other places like hospitals and public buildings.
Is it a student ID or ID for walking?
Visitor. It's a visitor.
Just kind of our reopening plan, visitors are going to be very curtailed in a way.
Visitors are going to be pretty curtailed, um, and they're going to have to do the survey, they're going to have to have a temperature check.
They have a real need to be there.
Yeah. So we're, we're suggesting that for most people, you don't need to be there. If you don't, not if you don't need to be there, if you don't need a face-to-face meeting, um, in most instances, we're still going to test it. Other question? Thanks. COVID nineteen reopening plan updates.
Absolutely. As I mentioned, the administrators were working very closely last week. Now retreat. It was largely. It's largely based off the. So this is the stakeholder, so as you know, um, this is the engagement of our community around, as of, as of today, we had over twelve hundred responses to our survey. And so a lot of our, our work last week was based on, based on this document. So I just wanted to go through those a little bit so you can kind of see things responding. The bulk of our respondents were parents, family members, um, a small number of students respond, uh, of our almost two hundred teachers, um, twelve, we had some counselors respond, it's for the support staff and administrators. But that's a very large number of respondents, given the short time that we've done that. So I'm, I'm hopeful and thankful that we are, we are getting at least a good understanding of where. And you can see the breakdown of the schools with regard to parents. And so it was I am not a student or parent would be the staff that responded. So it was, um, pretty widespread across the board, but the bulk of the respondents from the high school. How has COVID affected your household? You can see from no impact, which would be the blue, which is very small, to, you know, as you can see, the majority said noticeable impact, black, noticeable impact, almost forty percent. Forty percent plus thirty, but almost seventy percent have seen significant impact. So. It's, it's impacted by stakeholders very much. You can see if there was negative impact. In terms of employment, that wasn't really an issue for our stakeholders, no negative impact, almost seven hundred and forty-eight. And it was from reduced employment. And then if we had in-person instruction, whether it improved your employment, and according to this, it really would not necessarily have any impact on. Fifty-sixty percent. So knowing this, how comfortable or are you, how confident is the word we use? How confident are you sending your child back to school? So this is an interesting, you can see that if you take, uh, again, let's, let's go neutral, confident, strongly confident. So that's those three numbers right there. So this is strongly confident or confident. About forty-two percent of our respondents are confident or strongly confident. About thirty-six percent of our respondents are not very confident. So that's pretty even if you think about it. And then it's this, this gap here. Now, are they, are they neutral that we're confident or neutral that we're not confident? We just kind of have a sense of. So if we take, you know, this, if you take these groups together, we're talking about sixty, ours. Sixty-two point, almost sixty-three percent of our respondents are neutral, which is confident, strongly confident about all of that. So that's, I, I, it, it's split, you know, it's split about. And I would say, based on the, based on reading the survey results, the comments, a lot of that has to do with some of our parents of our young children, concern. And when your students go back. Again, this was asking about kindergarten and most of it was not applicable because we didn't have many. If you have a child with an underlying health condition, again, not applicable. About twelve percent of our population, um, says that they have an underlying health condition. And that they would be seeking a medical exemption. I'm assuming if they answered no, um, that they're not seeking a medical. So perhaps they're looking at homeschooling or something. But we'll see, we'll end up seeing how that plays out. Any of the other districts are, we're going to be encouraging often, so if they have a medical condition, child, or someone in the family, or they're just not comfortable, fill out the paperwork to, um, home to, uh, home to by, by the rest of the quarter. Most of the districts are not differentiating. A few are still over the line, but it appears to me that, um, the state is going to ultimately allow them to just don't come, to stay out when it's required to instruct them in some manner, one hundred percent of the time in the moment. So we're planning on that, but we will need a process. So what we're going to ask parents to do is by building, to fill out the home instruction paperwork, regardless of doctors or not, so that we have it east and every building, the process. And as I started rolling this out to parents, actually, this week, and then of course, very soon, next week, we're going to be encouraging people to do that. Because at some point, we're going to need to know who's in and who's not. Now ultimately, after the first week of school, we'll know who's in and who's not. The child, once that, that, see what they're doing. But that's probably how it's, but I'm hopeful that most of them fill out the appropriate paperwork at each building level for home instruction. We're going to encourage. So this is the question about homeschooling. Will you be homeschooling your child not relying on us? And that's how we break it in this, in this, just to kind of get a gauge. And as you can see, yes, about fourteen percent responded that they will be homeschooling. Fifty, almost sixty percent said, no, they won't be homeschooling and a small, about thirty percent said. So very small percentage of respondents said. We are, we are receiving those, those go with our bachelor's office. And there's a process to homeschool your child. So a child who's homeschooled is still connected to the school district. There are quarterly reports that a parent must file, they must follow the curriculum. We don't allow them to participate in their, in their sports, but we allow homeschooling children to participate in some of their activities, clubs, activities, so on and so forth.
Just a question, are we going to find out the underlying reason why they want to homeschool and if they have a medical condition, we're going to be asking them to do the other route?
Some parents don't want to, um, the ones that we've had so far are very adamant about. It's not necessarily, we're saying, so, but we'll reach out to the government, letting them know that they can, we're going to, we're going to home teach everybody. So certainly we'll be contacting all those people who have indicated saying, listen, are you still going to homeschool? If you're, if you're wanting to. Our homes, our home tutoring is going to be, um, done separately from what's happening in the classroom. So we're going to be, we got a program at the six to twelve called Apex. And then we have a program, um, K to five called. IXL. And so we're going to have members of our staff instructing those that are being home, school, home taught to us. There's specific members of our staff that are going to be, um, just managing the homeschool people because our teachers are going to have to, we'll see in the hybrid model, are going to have to manage the bulk of their kids on the off days. So for them to also then have to manage all of them that are homeschool, it's going to be difficult. So we're going to have a set of instructors district wide. There's going to be a secretary attached to them who's going to check the attendance of those, of those kids at home instruction. And then they're going to be, still have to have Zooms and those kinds of things, but it's going to be a very stride program. It's the law that you do the work, check in with the teacher, so the teachers will have that. Because they're, because those teachers, much like when we send a teacher to, uh, tutors in his homes, they're basically just facilitating the work. The work is not being taught necessarily by science, it's structured. And we can't, we can't, the kids aren't going to be able to sign up for AP. It's going to be, you're going to be taught the core curriculum.
So you're looking at four?
Yeah, and we're going to get into that. There's going to be four.
There's four actions for learning?
Do you have a breakdown of how many people, folks, in the first half of the second year?
I don't. Above that I'm seeing are. We're going to ask them to commit to ten weeks, we're going to ask them to commit to the first five weeks because I can't have it back before I leave now. So we're going to, we're going to tell folks that they have, you're going to keep your kid out remotely, you're going to be doing the Apex or the.
I.
I, I can't remember that. We're going to ask you to do that.
What if they bring them back and then take them home again? Can they do that?
Sorry.
Are you doing it at ten week sections? Like, let's say if that.
If you say, I don't, my child has a, um, medical condition, or I just don't feel comfortable with my child being there or whatever, then you're committing to ten weeks of remote instruction.
What happens in the next two weeks? Can they come back?
They could come back.
And can they leave again?
I hadn't really thought about that. I suppose if they didn't, so they didn't like the, I, the remote, then they come back and they don't like the.
Well, it might not be that they don't like the instructor, it might be the change in the environment.
Yeah, yeah, I don't know.
Hope it might improve.
Or the kids.
They might go back and, I suppose.
We could have another opportunity.
You know, kids are going to, kids who have been in school, my assumption is kids who have been in school are looking at a model that says it's going to look very similar. Well, they're coming back and it's not.
Oh, exactly, well, similar.
So if your kid comes back in the second ten weeks and then they don't like the mask and they don't like the distancing, they might.
Yeah, and so, you know, I mean, I guess you can do whatever you want.
I'm just asking. Just asking.
Pretty much do whatever you want, you know? Just figure it out. I, no, I, Charlotte, I need to be, I don't be.
No, I get it.
But I would assume that we're happy with the home teaching that we're going to create.
Right.
And then you come back and not happy with the hybrid teaching. Could you go back on the home teaching? It wouldn't be difficult because you would have.
Missed it.
Yeah, yeah.
Is the federal design, would it be difficult to come back seamlessly?
Well, seamlessly, um, they're not, they, they are, they are aligned to the New York State standard. Many districts use those as, for these instances, we, we, we were changing the odds of this, Brad Bowles said, north on a lot of the, and many kids that were in, um, different learning situations, whether they're suspended or those kinds of things. So there is, there is a little bit of overlap between courses. If you're taking earth science, yes, you could have come back because they roughly run, you know, they're, they're chucked out by a place on the standards and those can be kind of experiences. So yes, I, I, I wouldn't say it would be perfect, but, you know, and given the fact that our teachers are going to be teaching in a very unique hybrid way, um, I'll show you the best it would look like. I don't know how, I, they may be not as far along as you would be in this, but I, I don't know. You know, I mean, something we've never done before. Um, I believe schools should not resume this, and all students should continue distance learning. Strongly disagree, forty percent. And another twenty percent disagree, so almost, well, thirty-five percent and, and almost twenty percent. So fifty-five percent strongly disagree or disagree. Then if you add in the neutrals, you can see a very small percent, smaller percent, not, not a small percent, but about thirty percent agree to strongly agree that we should not start off school. Thirty percent. So that's, if you take about thirty percent of our population, let's assume it won't be as much because, well, they were assuming we were going to come back to the full learning and not the hybrid thing, so it's maybe not as much exposure and people will be a little bit more comfortable with the social distancing that we were able to create through the hybrid. So let's assume it's twenty percent. Let's just, let's say it ends up being about twenty percent of our population. We know that that's, that's around two hundred students. So if that's broken down, let's just, and I'm just, I don't know with the numbers, but let's say it's cut in half. So a hundred are elementary, a hundred are secondary. If I have two teachers responsible for those hundred along with them, then that's like, they have to be responsible for fifty students each. And you can think about a, a teacher's caseload, it's often back to many, especially fifty students, particularly secondary. So we'll see how it plays out, but I'm hoping that four teachers, you know, and will be, obviously Heather, myself, Nick will be collaborating in that, that's going to be a core team that will be working on this one hundred percent remote. And I think, knowing the teachers that we, we think we're going to have to do that, I think we're going to, it'll be all right. I mean, I think we'll be creative, but I think that they will be very much on top of it, but we'll see. We do have to, uh, we don't have anybody dedicated right now at the middle school, so we're going to work on and see how that's in the whole payout. We may have been having to use our sub-line to do a, use a long-term sub. It's just we can't pre-up the staff member. We have Max Highland, obviously, I don't see Al running, so it's, um, solid. Certainly, they probably handle a high school, I need someone to handle a middle school. So we're looking at that. Now, we've got our enrichment teachers at the elementary level, and that's going to obviously be something that we, they really can be attuned to because they're already doing the distance pen stuff and that's technology oriented. So I'm hopeful that we can get them to work with our elementary kids, um, with the backup being our, our school librarians, you know, our media specialists that would help them again. Rhonda, as you know, Rhonda Shaya runs our international programs significantly reduced. We do, we went from hospital to ten students without two kids, but we're going to try to do remotely to see if that, if they have that completely. But because we're running in-person learning, they will be able to get a pizza, um, so we'll see what happens. But, uh, I don't know how other parents. But anyhow, Rhonda, at least for this school year, is going to be administrative assistant attached to that remote learning. So that will be her responsibility this year. And then we'll see where international programs, so much of it is following. So it kind of worked out, kept during the budget and, um, obviously, given the fact that we need to have someone kind of be the person who does the attendance and records all that kind of stuff, that could be a solid, uh, for her this year. So we're thankful that we have the wish to. This is transportation. We're going to be, uh, there's a transportation survey that we're going to be pushing out that is very detailed, S for names, specific names, child one, child two, child three, who's going to be driving, when you're going to be driving. But which best describes how your children will be transported? So you can see the blue is our children will not need to rely on transportation. That's almost forty-three percent. So that'll be very helpful. Yeah, that coupled with the fact that we're only going to be transporting half of our kids twice a week.
So it kind of solves our problem.
Yes, so we should very easily be able to keep one child to support even less, depending on how that plays out. And then you can see there's, uh, about thirty-five percent are comfortable with the district transportation, and then there's a couple other responses there. But that was, that was good. So now we have to, we have to find out very specifically who those forty-three are, pull them out of the bus system. I'll, I'll explain it all, we, we, we created a green, green, green team and a white team, that's going to be the hybrid model, and I'll show you how that's going to work. And we have colored those greens and those whites, um, so that we can get the bus computer aligned with that, so that we can. And then what we have to pull out of each team, depending on the last, their last name, um, who is going to commit to riding all the time, so that we can really narrow those ones down. So we do have a bit of work to do with transportation. When in-person school resumes, face coverage should be worn by staff and students all the time when social distancing is possible. Well, as you know, um, the reason that we, um, we must socially distance, um, in every instance, unless it's absolutely impossible. So we can socially distance in our classrooms, um, but from looking at the numbers and general size of our classrooms, we can get the standard size, about seven hundred and sixty square feet. There's some bigger, some smaller, but that's about the average size. We can socially distance, um, about, uh, eleven to twelve students, depending on. So we had to cut our, our numbers in half. So that when a kid goes into the, so they have to wear the mask, walk in the classroom, walk out of the classroom, um, but once they sit in a chair, they would take the mask off, socially distance. Anytime they would get up out of the chair. And it's going to be disappointing, because I'll use, for example, the kindergarten. It'll be helpful, obviously, to the kids, but as you aren't familiar with kindergarten, there are mats on the floor, centers, they all gather around a smartboard with a teacher. They're not going to be able to do that, they're going to have to sit at desks, socially distance. So that's going to be exceptional, um, even in first grade, maybe a little easier in second grade, not much. But we know that our B E C, kids are, are working together at tables, house parties, all of that has to change, across the period. Um, and I will go into detail, there's going to be significant opportunities for mask breaks and, uh, you know, um, across A to twelve, there's going to be opportunities for students, um, once they finish lunch to go outside. We're going to try to use outdoor doors, uh, as much as possible, um, short of, you know, teaching out there on a regular basis. Um, and then I, I, I really, um, I'll, I'll share this with you, um, it's just very, people had a variety of different comments. Which measures do you currently believe are the most important? So there was, you could list A to J, but then you could add in your own comments, and it was just, I think we had, uh, almost five hundred comments. So I'll share with those, with you, you can read those, it's very interesting. And as you can see, hand sanitizing other classroom, uh, in common, very important. Clear, uh, daily testing of students and staffs, uh, that was a B, and we are doing that, um, and we are producing temperature scanners. There's a health questionnaire that I'm going to show you that every staff has, uh, has to take. Uh, we're going to encourage families to take it daily, but it's going to be pushed out weekly through our email, um, and, and provide different media. So the parents can take the survey. What, if they answer, if they answer, they see, they answer all the questions, but it says, the last question says, yes, I have responded in the affirmative to one of the questions, well, if it does, if they do answer yes, an email is generated back to, to the staff member, to Caddy, the building principal, and the school nurse. And if it's a, uh, a person, a family, it's generated back to the principal and the school nurse. And the school nurse will contact that individual, say, hey, listen, if you responded, are you out today? Or if you're in the building, you know, you eat in the office, talk to me, or if you're hoping to respond at home, if they were ill. Athletics, uh, I fully expect these events to be provided for, for student participation in traditional format with new safety measures. Um, I am concerned, so that was about forty percent, you can see it's split, I'm concerned forty percent, and I would not allow it. So the majority are concerned or would not allow. Um, we are, I can tell you this, obviously, the New York State Athletics, we currently have inter-stegan athletic on hold. Possibility of, uh, beginning on September twenty-first, um, in a very shortened season, fall seasons. Or the second model would be that inter-stegan athletics, all sports will take place, uh, starting in, um, late winter, early spring. Uh, but no decision has been made on that. Um, in terms of extracurricular activities, clubs, uh, the district is putting those on hold for the first five weeks of school. So there will be no clubs or extracurricular activities, we need to get our plan, we need to get our learning plan, and get the kids in, and then we'll see how it's going. And what clubs and activities we can start to bring online, um, from that point. But we will be putting clubs and activities in place. I don't know what's going to happen with concerts and all of that. So we'll see how that plays. Currently, right now, the guidance, uh, you can't have a group larger than fifty. So the max group that you can have is fifty, phase four. Which is interesting, because I was watching commentary on a recent gathering on Saturday night by some of our community. And they were so proud that they followed the guidance.
What do you mean?
Huh? What's that?
Are you talking about the same event that I?
I, I, I'm just talking about an event that I noticed on Facebook, I, this wasn't really, but I noticed that people were so proud that they followed the guidance. However, the guidance said you can't have a group more than fifty. And I don't know, I heard there was more than fifty, so I don't know if they follow the guidance.
Did you see all the pictures that were posted?
I.
Not social distancing?
I don't know anything about it, I don't know anything. I'm just, I just, the guidance says you can't have, you can't have a large gathering of more than fifty people. And they must be, and you must be socially distanced, and you must wear masks in those gatherings. So like, we're going to have our parent forums, I'm going to give you the dates of our parent forums. We're going to limit it to fifty, we can, we're going to be writing three per, uh, building, uh, per, per section, elementary. So up to fifty people can sign up, but then we'll, we'll be zooming that as well. And if we need to do more beyond that, well, obviously, but we'll see what kind of, uh, response we get by running three. We've got different times, one, there's a, two evenings and then, and a lunch. So we'll see what, uh, comes. Um, extracurricular, I talked about that.
Mentioned sports, is there going to be a plan for advanced sports?
Um, yes, uh, we will, uh, we're, they're, yes, they have to be twelve feet apart for the, the, uh, the, uh, singing and for the woodwinds. So, yes, we, we are, it, it, it will be by building, they're going to be done in small group. Will there be opportunity to bring, uh, to have a concert at some point? It's going to be, I still don't know, but it's going to have to be done in small groups. For the strings, strings can be together, if, um, they're.
Not breaking?
They're, they're wearing a mask or there's a music department. But for the woodwinds and the singing, it has to be twelve feet apart. So we're working, uh, each of the individual buildings is going to be working with the music, and we've already reached out with the music department, and we're devising a music department plan. Uh, just like we have a P E plan, uh, Brad's been meeting with the P E folks and so on. Within the learning plan, there's a P E plan, there's a music plan, um, and they're coming together. That might be.
Moving.
It's not, uh.
And that means the last slide.
Oh, okay. Oh, that's right, that is the, that is the last slide. Okay, so, um, what I don't say is true is that the one slide that you don't see is basically, is there anything else that you wanted to mention?
Share those with us.
I would love to, um, and I can tell you that it runs, so runs the gamut from, this is a political hoax.
Okay.
Bring everybody back to, are you out of your mind, you must be crazy. So those are the two ends of the spectrum, and then there's everything in either. So they're fun to read, I can tell you that, they're very interesting. And there's some very interesting ideas in there, too. I mean, people have some very neat ideas about, a lot of it talks about, you know, buying tents and outdoor classrooms and, um, you know, we're never doing a lot of that. There's going to be lots of items for kids to be outside, but, uh, you really couldn't get into tents and outdoor classrooms, which is really bad.
Well, it would only work if it's like that, to where.
Right.
It's not so.
Apparently, during the, I, I, I do learn from what, uh, uh, community member, during the nineteen eighteen pandemic, um, one of the worst winters in, in, or nineteen nineteen, one of the worst winters in history of winters, um, in the Weyland, they had these suits that the kids wore, like, fifty, outside with the hot bricks and the.
Wow.
Yeah, it suggested we do that, so, I don't know. Might be considered a change of working conditions, you know. So that was the survey that we, uh, so from that survey, uh, what we created was this. And you would have a. But, uh. So this is our district reopening plan, and, uh, I don't have any color, so I'll just kind of, you know, ask. Yeah, you can scroll through it.
Yeah, yeah.
So basically, what we did, um, there's, there's a thousand different templates out there. Um, this is obviously a draft version.
Your plug into something.
All right, so, um, so this is the, uh, this is what we must submit to the state. Uh, it's, it's basically a, um, it's a list of assurance. So we, all we have to do is check yes to every box, to say that we assure the state that we're, we're meeting all these requirements. But as I mentioned to you, on page two of the document, you can see that we must add a link. And so the link that we're adding, we're, we haven't done it by building. We have one district reopening plan, and then within the context of the reopening plan, we have the building level, um, plans are, are reed throughout. So, um, what we will do is be adding the links there, and then obviously, um, right now, we're just working on, on finalizing this doc, so. You can see that the, uh, the first, uh, portion of that aligns with the, uh, mandatory assurances, and that's communication with family and engagement. And it just talks a little bit about how we have tried to engage our, our community around, uh, the development of this plan, survey, we've been meeting regularly with, uh, we, we've, we discussed this issue with the Board of Education, the Board of Retreat, we're meeting with all of our unions, um, to discuss it with them, so on and so forth. Um, so we will be, uh, and, and I'm scrolling down there, but you can see, they, these are the, uh, dates of the elementary and secondary. Can you make that a little bigger?
I sure can.
Thank you so much.
Tell me where.
One more. I didn't wear my glasses. That's all right. So these are, uh, so we've got, uh, six, um, events planned to, uh, uh, parent forums, where people can come up and ask questions of us specifically. But you can see August twelve, August nineteen, August twenty-sixth, August thirteenth, August twenty, August twenty-seventh, at the elementary and secondary level. Uh, they'll be held at the high school, out of uniform, with their condition, uh, they'll have a social distancing and all these bad things. And then if, uh, we need to get into, so that, that takes us up to the, that's two weeks before school starts. If we need to add more in, uh, we certainly will, depending on how many people sign up. Okay? Um, and then it talks, you have to, you can see in the plan, we have to, um, make sure that, if you scroll up a little bit. Yeah. There's certain trainings that we have to do, so we've got links to hand washing videos, face covering, Don and DOF. I love that. You get, you either Don your face covering or DOF. Demonstrating DOFing, how do you take your, how do you take your face covering off? Social distancing, coughing and sneezing, all of those kinds of things, uh, so that those, and there's going to be, and we talk about during the first, uh, couple of weeks of school, there will be some training taken place by our school nurses, both with our staff and our students, um, around, um, this document. If you have a copy of, which is, um. And this was a big question that our, a lot of parents have, and a lot of staff that in terms of return to work school, uh, flowchart following COVID-nineteen related absence. So, um, we have, we, we, we developed this last week at our administrative retreat. As you can see downstairs, all of the information contained here is considered accurate, it is not, or should it be construed to be medical advice? If you have an individual problem or incident that involves a topic covered in this document, you can seek medical advice based on your circumstances. That was guided from C N C nursing. So we sat with our nurses, we had C N C guidance, uh, we had, uh, New York State Department of Health guidance, and so we came up with this flowchart. Um, we have, uh, run a pass our school physician, Dr. Ferguson. And so, um, it, it, it kind of represents a culmination of the best information in terms of what we, what, how we will react if someone has a variety of different scenarios around COVID-nineteen. So first one would be student or staff visitor had close contacted someone who tested positive or suspected of having COVID. That individual may return after fourteen quarantine period within last ten days. That should arise, the person would go on for remote teaching, um, and we would be working with those, uh, families that. But again, we're not going to be told, uh, by, um, the Niagara County Health Department, um, who is, who's testing positive or not. They've made it quite clear that they would not tell us.
They're not doing contact.
What's that?
They are.
They are.
But they're not.
But they're not, they will not be informing us, uh, about the school. School, right. So the only way we will know is if the family self, a lot of the situation, so.
So if somebody, though, in class, has a case, contact tracing would require them to say, this, they, they would have to, they would have to say, who's, what, who's opening, who's going to take the case?
Right, but they would do that, they would do that independently outside, they would call, so they would have to ask that child through the parent, well, who are the kids in your class? And they would have to call those families outside. Now, they, they said it.
So, you know, like, a letter going from school, there's been waste, that's not going to happen.
No.
What's going to happen is they're going to.
And, and.
Their student's not going to have all their education. And the gardener's not going to know every kid in their class, unless.
So the, so they, they may, so there is, they may contact us to help them in instances.
So the parent can stop. And then you can.
Can you give up phone numbers?
What's that?
Can you give up phone numbers?
It was directed by the Niagara County, in a pandemic, yes.
Okay. They have to, all of that. Because a lot of times, we were never allowed. Because you could end up just giving out the address, letting someone in your class, and like, shock, or whatever, like, someone, someone in your child's class, without naming the child.
If we do.
Yeah, if you know.
It'll be up to the Niagara County Health Department to tell them.
But no, according to.
But I think, let's read on, a student or staff tested positive or suspected of having COVID and had symptoms. So there's a symptom base, uh, may return after, uh, minimum of ten calendar days, or seventy-two hours, since resolution of fever. So people can come back with that symptom, according to the C N C guidance. Uh, student or staff visitor tested positive for COVID but had no symptoms, uh, and again, we wouldn't necessarily know that unless the subject's supported. Uh, may return after ten calendar days and pass, if they, of course, passed four, may return after two negative COVID tests. Again, we, we wouldn't know that. So the unfortunate part is, we're, we're not going to know. If they tell us at all, they may not tell us they've even been tested.
Well, some places, some.
Well, some places, some places in here, there's a doctor's requirement.
Yes, they could, yes, they could come back with a doctor's, but we're assuming that they're gonna stay out and tell us. We're talking, we're assuming that people are gonna be upfront about this. Right, your 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 child's not gonna be alive while he's testing positive for COVID. Student staff visitors exhibit one or more symptoms, but it's not suspected of having COVID, so this would be, this would be the one that we're gonna most support, right? Uh, seasonal allergies, ear infections, seasonal flu, strep throat, migraine, may be possible to return in fewer than ten days after onset of symptoms in seventy-two hours, fever without use of fever or losing medications, evidence of alternative reason for symptoms and or release, so they could come back with that. Let me call up and say, I know, I could be a strep. That'll be the conversation. Uh, and then, of course, student staff visitor returns from international travel or travel to a state on the Corona travel advisory list. Again, that'll be self-reporting, may return after fourteen calendar days from date of return from trip. For all of the above, return based on release from a healthcare provider would also apply, follow any updated guidance from uh, your safety.
I have a question on that one. So if a staff member decides to go to Florida, and then they have to come back and report to you for fourteen days, are they gonna be paid? Seriously, if they choose to go to a place.
Federal law. Federal law.
Why is it federal law, seriously? Because that's, they're not set, they're just.
First of all, how would we know they won't?
Well, I'm assuming that they self-reported, so, I mean, you would know maybe because they posted up basic.
Yeah, I mean, if we if we discovered it that way, we would obviously investigate, but if someone drives to Ohio.
Yeah.
Or someone drives to Maryland or whatever.
But the federal law says that if somebody is quarantined at this point, they get paid.
And there's quarant, and quarantine is in there, every, every, every contract talks about quarantine.
But it would be, I just, I think it's because they choose, this isn't something that they would just expose.
Well, you know what, I'll run it past you.
I already did.
Yeah, and and she said the same thing to me in the phone, we can probably. Um, so. I. I think the, I think the White House.
No, not officially. So you know, part of the time is that these, the non-travel, the travel ban states is a New York thing. But New York doesn't supersede federal. So that's really where we kind of get into this little tussle, because almost says we don't have to pay them. But the federal law says supersedes that, and it says that we do. Because.
Boy, I just, I mean, I could just see like a lot of people trying to get in on this vacation before the summer, and we have like forty teachers come say, well, I went to Florida, I went to wherever. And I can't connect to school, I mean.
So what, so yeah, I mean, that's, that would be. But remember, if there's not a lot of joy in in Florida right now, because you get there. Yeah, but nobody's doing that even.
And we'll have to just take it on a case by case basis, because we might never even know if someone. And the only way you're gonna know is if you investigate, and someone says something to you or someone.
You know, for us, the bigger issue is if you have a sick family member in one of those states and go to join your family for surgery or to go to join them for, just, you know, take care of them for that reason.
I think if we, I I really do think we get mired in every, uh, there's gonna be way too many details. Um, we're just gonna have to deal with these as they go up, you know, and and we will. Uh, but there there's gonna be too many subtleties to um all of this. We were already starting to get the uh employees who, because of this reason or that one, so they're not coming back, or not their face covering, or so we're starting to pile all of that. But, so the next piece on the, is the uh health and safety, um, and a lot of that, we've just kind of discussed and gone over, um, but it talks a lot about, and and our nurses were with us on Thursday. Um, and so they wrote a lot of this, but you can see um it talks about um movement around the buildings, it talks about face coverings, I'll leave right there, scroll up a little bit. Uh, so P P and face coverings at a minimum, five reviews of uh face masks will be given to each employee and student at the beginning of the school year. Employees and students will be trained at the outset of the school year uh on the proper use of masks and use of P P E by the school nurse. Uh, the nurse will be pushing in the classes and talk particularly to little kids. Employees and students will be asked uh to use one clean um per day, and should wash them at the end of the week, as well as employees and students should be encouraged to provide their own face covering to their home. In addition to the class mask, the district has purchased an unit, initially inventory of thirteen thousand full of hospital grade masks to provide to children and adults. Masks will be available on entering the school bus in the morning, on entering buildings, and at nurses' offices. If a person is medically unable to wear a mask, the district will provide alternate face covering such as face shield. We have purchased those, correct Patty?
Yep.
All employees will have to access, all employees will have access to a face shield or goggles, and will be provided with gloves as needed. Uh, teachers who work with students with special speech needs or hearing impairments will be providing with special masks uh with C two mouth areas. And you've purchased those, correct Patty? Masks must be worn, you can see. Masks must be worn anytime personnel uh personals, personnel are less than six feet apart upon entry in the building on tightly confined space occupied by more than one individual, and there is more than one team control in a district vehicle.
Is Buffalo, I just thought I signed with social distancing and mask. Is that Buffalo only?
No, it's, uh, you're supposed to as.
No, no, somewhere I read that they need schools reopen with social distancing and.
It used to be and or, now it's an. So, so our kids have to wear a mask coming in, our kids have to wear a mask getting out, but they also, they can take their mask off when they're socially distancing, but we cannot not socially dist and have them wear the mask all the time.
Alright, because I was confused, because I thought I read that they had to socially distance and.
They can't, you cannot, you can't, you must have social distance.
Right, but when they can't, they have to wear a mask.
Right. So you must have, you could, before, you could be and or, so you didn't have to have the social distancing, and you could have them all wearing the mask, which would allow.
So the priority is social distancing.
Correct. And that was pushed by uh, that was a, I think they were working with the New York State Teachers Union on that, because that was a big push on the part. There's still, there's still a big push on the New York State Teachers Union to not have any in-person. They're very concerned, particularly, and I, I mean, it says that I blame them, I mean, downstate, it's not so much here, but a significant number of teachers died in New York City in the first, first ball round. So, I mean, where it was really raging, you know?
It was raging, and they weren't socially distancing or wearing masks.
Right, but a significant number of teachers that died resulted, so I I don't, I I mean, they they should protect their. People are dying, you know, but at this point, it's social distancing and mask wearing, and then, of course, once they get the kids in the school in a, in a chair that's socially distancing, they can take the mask off. But they must, they get up out of the chair. We will, we will not, we will not, we do not have the personnel to do that, um, in those instances where we're required to have an aide on there, uh, but we cannot we just can't afford it. We were not prepared for that, we would need to hire, we didn't, we specifically didn't hire five aides to balance a budget, we would need to hire about nineteen aides.
But they will be one per seat or with their families, so they probably, yeah, they did take their mask off on the bus.
Well, let's, we're we're gonna say that they're not going to take their mask. Just like I absolutely demanded that they not take their mask off at the senior parade.
Right. Right.
Hopefully, everything will work out. You can see, uh, the next piece talks about uh, so there will be a limit to student schedules when they are able to uh to take mask breaks, this will be dependent on on the building schedule and and density of the population. These breaks should ideally be uh when students can be six feet apart and ideally outdoors, or in rooms that will be well ventilated. And that, those are, that's outlined in the building level. Other than teaching line, it's all rooms and everything. It goes on, talks about the hand sanitizing stations, and uh, we've got an inventory of P P E that will be ordered on a forty-five day cycle. We're still uh working with um uh Transportation of America, Patty's gotta add in some things on from their their plan um for the kids on the bus and their cleaning plan. Um, we should, we have to put in their local hospital capacity, so Patty's looking to get that number, I don't know what it is. There, we talk about engagement with stakeholders and and uh some of the things that we've we've done to um engage stakeholders around this plan, how we're gonna communicate the plan. I've talked to you about that, it it will be all out there on everything we have, plus these in-person meetings, those kinds of things. Um, protocol for observations of signs of illness, I just went over that with you. Um, we will be going over all of this with the uh staff as well. This talks about the temperature screens and the health check questionnaire, Heather, can you click on that, please? So our, all of our staff and our families will be uh required, or at least our staff will be required, our parents will be encouraged to take this health questionnaire, and you can see that if you've been uh within six feet of a person that confirmed COVID, you had the symptoms. Um, you have the end of the problem, the positive emergency symptoms. Has traveled internationally, yes or no, and then the last two questions are the critical ones, because they generate email. I have not answered yes to any of the above questions, I may remain on campus. I have answered yes to one or more questions, and must either stay home or report to school nurse immediately for further assessment, and that generates.
Can you move back up to the question?
Yes.
This is the C D C.
Yeah. And we create it to do this every day. So you have to stay home. Even if you just have a sore throat?
Yes, technically.
A check for each of these, it will just be at the end, the afternoon.
Or if you came to work and you had the sore throat, you'd have to go down to the nurse and say, hey, listen, I just have a sore throat, uh, you know. I was saying.
Literally, I have an eczema, so you don't know, that's why I say, I have it, it's on the list. You would think that they would have more.
And that is what's recommended by the state.
Is somebody gonna be monitoring to make sure the staff does this every day?
Yeah, uh, they have to, they have to, they have to confirm when they log in, if there's another guest that I will take the survey. They have to put their name on there, and yes, it is, it is checked. So we'll know by building who's doing it, not whoever is.
And the families are supposed to do it every day, but are.
Yeah, we're gonna send it out, we're gonna push it out through our email, through the app. We're gonna push it out once a week and encourage them to do it every day. But they, there's no way you can know, you know, you can't, you can't force it, so we're just gonna, we're just continually be pushing it out, you know?
There are two things about it, one is it's asking uh about the household, so you wouldn't have to do it for each child. Yeah, I know, um, the second is that we can't ask for their names on it either. And so even though we're asking them to do it, it's anonymous.
But the staff, we can, and we, and and the staff are required to put their name in there.
Because, because they're an employee. People for condition, we're asking symptoms.
Okay.
And we're telling them to identify whether they should or should not be at work.
So if it's anonymous, earlier you mentioned, oh, that if it, if you click yes, that it gets kicked back to the principal, but if we don't know who did it.
Yeah, I thought next time it was based on email, though. Didn't he say we get, we kick back from the families based on email? I'm sure we could do that.
Um, so he said, I'm I'm sure he said we could do that.
Yeah, I think we're, we are able to do that, I got, we're gonna see, I I thought, we talked to. We would know where the email that came from. I'll have to look further into that.
But basically, if anybody answers in the affirmative, they should be kicked back to home. So it's kind of just like a daily reminder of check yourself to make sure.
Yeah.
It's not being designed.
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, um, and then we've got, so then, and we'll also have, it's it's a hundred, it's actually a hundred point four, I guess, we'll have the scanners uh in each of the buildings, and um, we're still working on how those will be um maintained each morning. Manning them.
Two people to man them. So what we know, we've got these really um, really nice um temperature scanning cameras that are not thermal scanner, they're not thermal imaging cameras, but they're thermographic cameras. So you would see a picture, it looks like you would see in a picture, and over their head will pop out their temperature. What we know about any of those kind of um thermometer devices that read skin temperature is the weather will affect your skin texture. So we are gonna have to have somebody manning them, and we're gonna have to have a cooldown station, which is socially distancing seating somewhere in the building where we will put the people who scan high until we can figure out how to get them to room temperature. Um, it's, it's a little odd, but you know, if you've gone to your doctor on hot days or sat in your car and walked in, um, you will scan high. But the the scanners that we bought will do approximately thirty people at a time, um, and then we will have somebody that they um can help just to reconfirm if we have any.
So it it's still a work in progress as to exactly how that's gonna look i- in those entrances, but um, we'll we'll have it. It'll be interesting how it plays out.
Plus, they're supposed to be entering the building socially distanced, so they would be going single file, right?
We hope.
We hope so. One entrance per building for.
Uh, well, high school, we're gonna.
We're gonna have two, two per building.
Right, one for staff and and basically other students.
The kids are all coming in one door?
Well, no, because I think that we can't. Well, we originally said that, but then we talked about having the bus entrance different than the drop-off entrance, so for traffic purposes. So I think we're gonna end up with two at most.
Oh, right, right, because we will have to have the drop-off, yeah, yeah, that's right, we can change that, yeah, so we will, the kids are gonna be coming in two entrances, which is why we have two scanners.
Yeah.
How long the present is?
Seconds, not even, not even seconds, like, I have, so when I bought for the offices after the, you know, after everyone's in the building where they're supposed to be, the main offices will have like a kiosk that does one person at a time. But the main entrances will have scanners that can do multiple, and literally as you're walking up to it, it's scanning you, it's like one to two seconds. So it won't make a bottom line if it's, no.
And and like I said, we're still uh, like, for instance, it says prior entering uh building visitor must have a scheduled appointment, no, we can't. We encourage a scheduled appointment, they may not have a scheduled appointment, right? Um, all visitors, vendors, guests, indoor contractors will ring, talks about how they get in, they have to take the health questionnaire, all those kinds of things, but, but you know, we.
Oh, if they're dropping, but a visitor is somebody who's staying for more than a drink.
Right, right, but someone who just could just show up.
Not to visit.
But they did, you know, they called because they they were dropping something off.
But a drop-off isn't a visit, I think.
You're talking about actually entering.
Actually entering and staying for more than fifteen minutes.
So a salesman just can't just pop in.
Right, no, they have to have an appointment. So a visit is, like, if you look at what they talk about contact time, it's fifteen minutes or more of contact with somebody who's positive. So visit means not just I'm dropping off my lunch, or I'm dropping off my kid's instrument, a visit is I'm here to stay for a little bit.
This might be the year you teach them all responsibility and not bringing it.
So then, it talks a little bit about um protocols for the uh, how we're gonna be pushing out uh information to parents on the health check, and then this is the signage that we're required to post, and just scroll up, uh, talks about how we have to teach about social distancing and and those kinds of things, and hallway traffic will be reconfigured, this is important. Um, so in all of our buildings, uh, we bought signage for the floors, and we'll have two-way traffic, and in high school, there'll be certain upstairswells and downstairswells, so that's, that's all coming together right now. Uh, but we do have, uh, we are, each of the colored tape will be placed down in the center of hallways, one-way traffic, blah, 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 as you can probably imagine how that would go. Uh, accommodations to students who are at high risk, um, so to accommodate employees in district uh federal emergency leave back, the family leave back, and that is students with medical documentation that are at high risk, and persons will receive instruction at home. The importance of wearing the face mask, uh, distance cannot be retained. Again, it talks about signage, maintaining adequate supplies, Patty's got the supplies that are we have on, on what we have and what we, and how we will get more.
What's the glove protocol?
So the glove protocol is really if you're touching students. So anytime you touch a student, and you will, you know, you'll pat them on the back, hopefully we don't have to restrain anybody, but there's other times when you might be, I don't know why, but there are times when you'd be touching a student, right? So anytime you touch a student, whether it's to.
Direct shoes.
Direct them, or you should be wearing gloves. For cleaning, certainly, you and our cleaning staff would have to have them, but in the classroom, that's more for that. Also, if you're going to be sanitizing, our teachers are going to be, have asked if they could sanitize some of their own spaces, and we have said as long as.
We want them to, we're encouraging them to do so.
So we're going to have gloves there.
We're not quite able to study all this staff on during days, so the teachers are going to have to help us in the classrooms.
Any OTPT services, speech might also need to.
This just talks about, you know, if they're, if they're diagnosed with COVID, you know, it's all, all.
And that language follows that flow chart, so.
And that's, that's, this is just the language that aligns to that flow chart that I just went over with you. Protocols to clean and disinfect schools, and as, we'll bring in some of the interesting cleaning mechanisms and devices that Patty has purchased, Paul will kind of set a table up if you take a look at them. And if you want to talk a little bit about cleaning and our plan, we're going to have an extra cleaner on each of the buildings during the day, so there'll be three people on during the day. And then our night folks have already gone through some training already.
So we've been working with Pilliard, which is a company that sells a lot of the EPA-approved disinfectants, and cleaning and disinfecting are two different processes and procedures, so first you clean, then you disinfect. The disinfecting materials have to stay on surfaces, depending on what kind you're using, it could be anywhere from three minutes to thirty minutes. And then they all have to be wiped clean. So we've bought what, what, it looks like something out of a science fiction movie, there are guns that literally do continuous spray. So you can do a whole room, walk away, do another room, walk away, do another room, walk away, and then come back and actually wipe it down.
So you wipe it to some.
That, or after it's sat for a certain number of minutes, depending on what the disinfectant is.
So I assume that we're trying to minimize all the paper, because paper can't get wet, it's not clean. But there's paper everywhere, you know.
And there's not going to be paper everywhere, so one of the things we talked about is we really are going to have to keep our desks clean. Go to hard surfaces, which is, is really like, that's, that's, this is going to be hard for the elementary staff particularly, because they are going to look more like institutions now. So we've asked them to pick up their rugs for now.
Yeah, they're going to be desk, I mean, the biggest change is there's going to be actual students' desks as opposed to tables and floor mats.
Are going to be gone. I did, I, I did pipe partitions, student partitions, so that the reading tables and reading areas, they can actually just be partitioned with their masks on and have that as a safety measure. But it's, it's, school is going to look different, for sure. With the disinfecting locks and the cleaning locks, we actually have a log, so if you click on that, you would see that every cleaner in every area that they clean in, and every room is going to have to initial that they cleaned it, and on what date they cleaned it.
In fact, you go on our, in the district office, you use one of the restaurants.
As you can imagine, it's just not right there. It's right there.
Yeah, the clean law, right there.
Oh, I could have just pointed there. It's not made our custodial staff super happy, but it's something that we really feel like we have to do. In addition, Hilliard gave us a schedule of how to clean a room specifically for this purpose, so if you look at high-touch areas, those are going to have to, have to be cleaned multiple times during the day. Some areas that you would deep clean more regularly will not be cleaned as regularly. So it's a very different process and procedure for cleaning, so those cleaning carts will be with each, with each cleaner on every shift. So they'll use the cleaning carts, and then we'll find out on the walk after they.
I mean, let's face it, you know.
It's going to be different.
There was even talk early on, and when these plans first came up, you would make parents sign up live, or. It's not going to happen. But the bottom line is if something goes awry here, if something gets seriously ill or passes away, or it's something along those lines, I mean, you're, you're wide open.
We have to prove that we call it all the.
Yeah, yeah, and to the best of our ability, right, you know, that we follow the plan, that we clean.
I have to stick with the cleaning thing, I hope we can just not go back to night cleaning, I mean, cleaning's like, everywhere we go, it's like so much cleaning.
Yeah.
Uh, we still have to conduct all schools, like fire drills and those kinds of things, we have to do that socially distanced way. These are the contact people and the plan. And then we go into more detail on the various buildings in terms of the health and safety plans. Mostly aligned to the district plan, obviously. The facilities, not, not really much there, it really says, are you, you still have to, you still have to align with all of the regulations, as you can see with the facilities, it talks a little bit about.
There, a lot of this really focuses on if you're changing your physical structure, your building, you still need to report it.
Building condition surveys, and, you know, all, all of those kinds of consistent. So pretty straightforward there.
So we will have, like, the mouthpieces on water fountains. We're up for lead testing, it's going to be pushed off a little bit because we have to have, we'll have the water running. First of all, we're going to have to run the water prior to students coming back because of that inconvenience and so on. But then the kids have to be here before we can do the lead testing on the water again. Our five-year facilities plan is still on schedule, it's all of those little things that they just want to confirm, we're still doing all the other safety things for kids.
So this talks a little bit of, we just, we outlined how students will be able to use locker spaces in the middle school and high school, it's going to be quite a bit different than it has been in the past to keep those socially distanced, and there's going to be specific times during the day that only certain kids can go to their lockers at certain times and also those kinds of things. Um, they're also going to keep it in their lockers, but there'll be certain times when they can go and it'll be spread out, and those kinds of things. I know they're working on that right now. Uh, child nutrition, so basically, we met with the folks from Personal Touch today, everything's going to be, so the kids are going to be, all the kids are going to be in their cafeterias, we do have overflow rooms at the PEC, it's the auditorium stage in it, at the IEC. Keen has got a couple of rooms set aside outside the cafeteria. At the middle school, they think they can get it all done in the cafeteria using the stage, and at the high school, if there's a need for it, the overflow will be in the gymnasium, which will drop the curtains, so it's a third. But I don't think we're going to need it because depending on the number of kids that are out, and the, the numbers of desks we can get in each of the cafeterias is pretty significant, so the kids are going to be eating at desks in each of the cafeterias. Individual desks, there'll be no tables, pulling all the tables out, desks will have a moon lying around them, and they'll be six feet apart. You know, all the way to the cafeteria, all the lunches will be grab and go. There'll still be a hot lunch, but it'll already be prepared in a styrofoam, or they can get a sandwich or those kinds of things. And that's pretty much all of it.
You know, on the, on the days where school is distance learning, we are going to have to find a way to get kids lunches.
Not over the plan, but yeah, we're going to.
A lot of districts are strictly doing pickup only. We're going to promote the pickup, and then if you really can't find a way to get your lunch, then we'll have that conversation with you. Our goal is to make sure everybody who really needs a lunch gets one. But we are going to see if we can get.
Some districts send kids food home over the weekend, I wonder if we just send them home with their lunches ahead of time when the other day they're here.
So the districts that are doing that are one hundred percent free and reduced.
Yeah.
Or not.
But what I mean is, you can't just, so on Tuesdays, you can't just send Thursdays and.
And I can't see the kid carrying the lunches home.
We, we can't.
We'll, we'll figure it, we'll deliver them, so if we have to, we'll deliver.
We can't identify the free and reduced, because we're not supposed to bring them out.
Oh, I got it.
So that becomes really the issue, the bigger issue with that, I think.
So transportation, Patty's working with Stay, they're going to be doing the cleaning and the disinfecting between runs and deep cleaning after runs, it talks a little bit about, you know, the fact, obviously, we're going to have one, one child to a seat unless there's a family member, and then maybe two children to a seat. Students will be required with facial coverings when riding the bus, but we can't deny them, so they could actually get to the bus, and the bus driver will have extras, hey, you forgot your mask? No, my mother says I don't wear a mask. That could happen. My family doesn't, we don't believe in masks, it could very easily happen. We have, we can't deny it, we have to let them on the bus, hopefully all of them. And that's kind of, and then once they get off the bus, they'll be taken to the nurse's office, and they'll try to get the family. But hopefully that won't happen on a regular basis.
Odd question.
Yes.
Do the kids face each other even if they're in the classroom?
No, in fact, they can't, that's very specifically, they can't, they have to be. In fact, I said that, and Patty said, no, they got to be.
Yeah, I think, I know.
Patty said, no, you can't do that.
And it's not, yeah, I mean, necessarily.
No, I know it's not, Patty, Patty, Patty working with. Not Patty at all. Patty told me no when I asked.
Do we have like something like a head, like you did. Something on a smart board in front of them or something, and they're just going to, and thinking about the little kid, they're all just going to sit there all alone.
Yeah, we'll have to come up with some entertainment, maybe.
So one of the things that they talk about is what.
It's a good idea, Danielle, it really is.
How listening to them on their lunch.
We'll figure, it's a good idea, we'll, we'll figure something out.
You're shortening the lunches, right? So they're not sitting there, they're already finished, yeah.
Yes. At the high school, they're going to get, it's about a twenty-five minute lunch, and then they're going to get a mass break for the last outside or in the gymnasium or something like that. So that's when they're doing a significant mass break. Transportation to non-district schools, where we had a meeting the other day with the Stella St. Peters and the. Then there's just some subtle variations in the elementary plans. Social emotional well-being, we talked a little bit about that, and how we're going to be reaching out to students and families, and working with our school counselors and our social workers, and Aaron Myers was part of our planning team, the social worker at BZ, so it's going to be very significant in terms of making sure that we're addressing those issues and needs of students. Welcoming students back, reorientation with school. These are some things that we're going to be teaching our staff to look for in kids.
I have a question.
Yes.
Is there any support being offered for parents? Social, emotional?
We have, we don't have any plan right now.
Okay.
Just dealing with the kids, but not necessarily a bad idea.
I mean, I think there will be, there, you have the possibility of parents who are going to have a hard time sending their children back?
As we start to, as we start to break down further into teams, Charlotte, so for instance, I talked to you about the distance learning team, you know, we'll be planning with Heather and Nick and myself, but then also, I'll be bringing the counselors back together, we'll be discussing this in more great detail with them, so we can push these things out with our social workers and our counselors.
I guess the reason I think it's important is just because the parents are giving the initial messages to their children about attending school, so if they're.
If they're stressed, if they're, the parents are going to be stressed, just like.
We might like to reach out to parents who might be.
As part of our wellness plan, don't we have, I think we, I think we're mandated to give parents lists of support services.
Yeah, but they need.
So maybe that's something we can put into as a reminder.
Yeah, and our counselors, like I said, I know we're going to have to deal with this on a regular basis, so. And then in each of the buildings, it talks more specifically about some aspects of their social emotional that they're going to be working with students. Okay. So school schedules. So here, if you want to take a look, this is basically one of the most important components of the plan. It's this Elusaport Central School hybrid learning model, so as, as I've explained to you, based on the fact that we need to socially distance and wear masks, not and/or wear masks, it became very clear to us that we needed to open schools up with a hybrid model, that is to say that we would not be able to have all of the children at school at once in all of our buildings. I can tell you that as far as I, there is no school in Orlean or in Iber County that is not opening with a hybrid model. And I do not believe there's.
No, that is, they are all.
Yeah, they're opening, I'm sorry, that is not opening with a hybrid model. That is not.
Everyone's opening with a hybrid.
Without a hybrid model, yes. And then at Erie County, I'm quite certain, I got a meeting in Hamburg Central, and it appears that just, I know that there are some smaller districts, maybe in the southern tier, that may be able to do that socially distanced with, you know, they've got, you know, two hundred kids, K-12, those kinds of things. But so, this is the hybrid model that we came up with, it is very similar to the models that are being expressed by our local school districts, like Weebill, La Tawanda, Barker, but ours is tailored to what we felt was the best case scenario for our school district. So in our hybrid learning model, so for instance, on the first week of, of school, on, we have broken our kids down, letters A through L, M through Z, that's where you keep families together, and believe it or not, if you break our entire district down, A through L, M through Z, there's like a sixty-kid difference, one side to the other. So we, you know, we know that some families have different last names, so we're currently pairing those up right now to make sure that they're all on the same team. So we've created a green group and a white group, we're a green team and a white team. So on Mondays, all students, K through 12, will be remote learning. And that will be the teacher planning day, remote learning day, kind of the chance to be remote with the, with their entire class. On Tuesdays and Wednesdays, we will have the green group in, and the white group, the M through Z's, will be remote. So we're working with teachers, there'll be, one of two things will either happen, either teachers will have a a camera in their classroom, and we're going to talk with them about that tomorrow, some of them are interested to do that, and so then the student can log in and watch from home. Or, for those teachers that are not comfortable with that, or just it doesn't work with their program, the teachers would have to engage and be remote with those kids that are not in class from, say, for the high school two forty to three ten, or at the elementary school eight ten to eight forty, or during the school day as needed. So then on Wednesday, Thursday, the white group would come in, the M through Z's, and the A through L's would be at home. And that's, and so then, that's how the plan would progress, at least for the first ten weeks of school. So we would bring, we'd bring half of the students in two days a week, and then half of the students in two other days. And at one day a week, all of the students would be completely remote.
That day, sure, completely remote, but synchronous learning is important for reversal purposes, if nothing else, because the likelihood is that at some point, we will have to be in all remote. And it will be good practice for the teachers and the students to have experience being synchronous and remote.
Synchronous means that the student, if they're supposed to be in the fourth period class, and there's, they're logging into a Zoom or something at fourth period time, and they're, they're virtually in that classroom.
They are following a modified schedule, but it's their schedule.
Now, they, but depending on whether the teacher wants to have the camera in the classroom or not, they may not, so there may be a different timetable.
No, no, you're talking about the synchronous day.
Synchronous.
Oh, yeah, the synch, oh, yes, the synchronous day, we follow the.
Yeah, at the secondary level, right, as we're sitting here in this moment, the secondary students are following a modified period-by-period schedule.
So we have all math teachers teaching it? So we have all math teachers teaching it?
No, no, they'll be following a modified schedule, so if they have
Shorter time, we were originally gonna do that, but then we broke it down to shorter time.
Yes, and so if I have math first period and Patty has ELA first period, she's logging into her ELA class, I'm logging into my math class. At the elementary level, it's different. And that's in here, so just sit tight. If they were to get there.
I have a question.
Of course you do. So, I do wanna say that there's a couple of things happening here. So we've got, so on the hybrid learning day, you've got the greens and the whites. Then we have our daily lanterns. So our self-contained students and our ELLs will be coming, and we're required to do that by the plan. We have to make special accommodations for our more significantly handicapped students and our ELLs. So, our six-one-ones and our twelve-one-ones students will be coming Tuesday, they'll be, they'll be remote on Mondays, but Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday.
There's an error in your paperwork. Your daily lanterns, the group you're talking about, you have listed here for school on Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday.
Oh, thanks for that catch. That's why this was drafted.
All right.
Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday.
Yep.
And then, we know that we're gonna have some students who are gonna opt out of all of this, and be one hundred percent remote, and that's that other group of teachers that will be working to work with them, the learning software that we are working to implement. Student placement in groups based on their last name. All students will learn home on Mondays, so schools can be thoroughly cleaned and disinfected. On Mondays, teachers and staff will provide synchronous remote learning, participate in professional development, and/or meetings planned for instruction. When holidays fall on a Monday, school will otherwise be closed, there will be no remote learning on those days. All teachers and sports staff members will work on campus every day. Students are on campus and may work from home or school and students are learning remotely. So, that's our hybrid model currently right now. Danielle, you wanted to ask some questions?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions.
Yeah, please.
What are the A's gonna do on Mondays?
They'll either be working and we haven't, we haven't determined that. I we'll meet, they're part of the meeting tomorrow, and they'll be coming on campus on Mondays. There were instances where they did help in a very limited way, remotely. But my, my guess is they'll probably be coming on campus.
Could they be cleaning?
No.
Contractually? No, they
No, they're not cleaning. Well, what they could be doing is putting together packets for teachers for the remote learning sessions. They certainly could help handing out the lunches.
But we're gonna talk with them tomorrow about their response.
I just and I thought
My next question is, I don't think you mentioned this, teachers' children, what are, are they, are we gonna do special accommodations for teachers?
So for, for K through five, they, they, we will allow our teachers home to bring their, their students can go to school in four days. But, but six through twelve, because they're a little bit older and they can stay home.
Well, I thought we were gonna try to set up the daycare program.
Right, if we can't set up the daycare program, I, I don't know how that's gonna play out, and I don't know how accepting they are of that. I know that they are very pleased that we would be willing to allow them the K through five.
So, just our teachers, not all?
Correct, just our teachers.
Okay. And then
But we, we're also looking at a possible daycare for them.
Instead of school.
Correct, to keep it more fair with the rest of the community. But they are also essential to, so, you know, if their kids are home on the green day.
In the daycare, would they be doing
Would be difficult.
And then, why, why didn't we have like a Sunday?
Because there's a lot of we originally looked at Wednesday, but there's so many holidays on Mondays that
Well, also in part, when we were looking at Wednesday, if Wednesday was the remote day, our teachers would have some, half their kids who already got the in-school instruction and half their kids who didn't. And so that made it really complicated for the synchronous learning aspect of it.
So the teacher can set the stage for the weekend on any given week when you have a holiday. Most greens would do that.
So it's not purely cleaning, we're not cleaning on Mondays?
Oh, they're gonna be significantly in order.
I'm just taking it in between the
There's gonna be significant cleaning every evening.
And then, you mentioned cameras in the classroom, so if
We purchased a hundred, we purchased a hundred cameras.
So I guess my question is, if, if the kids are learning something Tuesday and Wednesday, is that teacher teaching the exact same material Thursday and Friday? So what would be the best having kids watch, watch the same material?
No, with the same sequence?
No.
Cause the kids are
No, you're teaching the same thing twice. You're teaching your green group this month on Monday, Tuesday, or I'm sorry, on Tuesday, Wednesday, and on Thursday, Friday, you're teaching your white group.
So why would they Why would you have a camera?
And then, and, and on top of that, then can they only cover a pack of the materials that they normally would cover?
They're gonna be giving them extension work when they go home, but yeah, they're gonna be basically covering that return.
And then, I think my final question is, and this is the only one, green and white students, they don't correlate with the middle school teams, are we
No.
That's why they're grouped now.
We call them groups or something?
Yep.
Yeah, no, they do not correlate at all. But I, I, in terms of the teams, you know, there's gonna be very limited, we're probably gonna get to a point where we're shut down legally. I would get, I would guess by Thanksgiving, based on everything that we're hearing from, you know, CDC. So, I would be shocked if we are even in session for the winter and early spring, but we'll see. But I don't see us moving away from this model unless, unless the state lifts the guidelines for social distancing.
So if we went to an all-remote learning, would we then follow all synchronous days that the people play?
Yes, yes. And, and Danielle, it's still difficult because as I've stated to you our staff, our teachers are still, there's a continuum of their abilities with synchronous. And there there's, there's a continuum of where people are at in terms of their work responsibilities, like every child, right? There's some people we work with that are really on mobile gatherers, right? There's others that maybe, you know, they just, you know, they're pretty good.
I, I have a question.
It's the same thing, listen, there's principals like that, there's superintendents like that, you know, I mean, it's life, it's just life.
I have a question about the legality of putting children on camera when their teachers are being photographed. Do you have
We have a sign option for
Do you ever have parents say, do not photograph my students?
We do.
So they're gonna have to make sure those children are within the screen?
Yeah, we're gonna be in the back of the room and obviously the kids are all facing forward.
Not answering the question.
Right, we have to put a mask.
No, I'm just, you know, I'm wondering how it's going to work, for instance, when you have elementary students who are home two days, three days, actually, and parents are working, if they're putting their kid into like a daycare situation, how are we going to make sure that those kids are being able to be able to log into their asynchronous?
Go ahead. We hope that we're gonna be able to make contacts with these daycares and, and try to provide that instruction remotely through the daycare, we hope, but we can't
You know, if it's a home-based
There's a lot of different
Right, there are a lot, there are legitimate reasons why they might be challenging for some of our families. We're trying to make it, we're trying to balance the ease of making this workable for our families and also the obligation that we have to provide instruction to our students. And that is why, and also the burden that is placed upon our teachers to have to coordinate this now three-rail circus of that instruction. Because while they have kids who are in front of them, they'll also have kids who are not in front of them. On the days when they have all of their kids in front of them, woo-hoo, it's gonna be remote. So, it's gonna be a challenge.
It's gonna be, it's gonna be an exceptional challenge. It's super difficult. My guess would be that the state's probably going to have to negate all state testing again next year as well because I, you know, and I we're gonna hope that we get better at it, you know, that we learn.
But will you get through all the curriculum that you're doing?
It's not
It's not possible.
So you talked about the possi, the possibility that there'd be people who would keep their kids home full-time. What about somebody who says, you need to take my kid five days a week?
And there are those people.
There's no, no provision.
You can't do that. Because if we do it for one, we'd have to do it for all, and we can't socially distance and take home.
And we also don't have the staff who can provide instruction for those students because they're connected with a green group or a white group that are getting fifty percent.
Really, that's the state's decision though, isn't it?
Well, ultimately
It's out of your hands.
Right, and ultimately, we'll know next week what, what, if we're gonna be even open or in session.
Right. What, what, have you been given any guidance at all? Like, when we shut down last time, they made you run a daycare for essential workers, are we gonna have to do that again?
We don't know, we don't know.
We don't know.
Just like we don't, we heard this morning when we met with child nutrition, you know, remember we could just get it to everybody, we got reprimanded for that, whether they were allowed free introductions or not. She thinks they're gonna probably end up making that statement. The woman from Personal Touch, which Sue has, cause she's so
She's so nice.
But, you know, right now, we have to just focus on our free introductions. So go ahead, Heather.
And this next part goes, there was a question about elementary and what does that look like on Mondays? So on Mondays, again, as we're sitting here in this moment, prior to talking to LPUT and, you know, other important people, on Mondays, synchronous learning will occur in smaller whole groups that include a minimum of twenty minutes each, so sixty total minutes of reading, writing, and math for kids in K through five. And also thirty-minute virtual rub time to build classroom community. We're thinking about the social, emotional needs of the students, and that, that thirty minutes would be the time when really all students, green and whites, would interact. And because that's the only time that they would be able to interact.
So basically, we're talking about, we're, we're hopeful that we can produce an hour and a half synchronous opportunity with elementary. That's a long time to keep a kid back in the front.
Right, and so
We can even do it that much, which is why I'm trying to do it twenty minutes, twenty minutes, twenty minutes, reading, writing.
So what that would look like is that a family would be able to choose from one or two sessions, so session one, which is from nine to ten, and a session two, which is from eleven to twelve, depending on what their schedule might better accommodate with the rub time in between for, so it would be the end of the session one or the beginning of the session two, with a fifteen-minute buffer in between to allow for, you know, the sand or
Could a parent do
Both?
Both? Could they do like the math?
Let me show you some of the other options.
And the, so that the child has a bigger break in the middle? Like the math, you're seeing reading math and
It'll all be within that hour.
Right, but could somebody take the first twenty minutes, the last twenty minutes, and then in the next session, take the middle twenty minutes?
I don't know.
Okay. I'm just wondering about breaks, like little ones.
No, I'm sure the teachers will do them. And then, the special area, the teacher's schedule, so theoretically, a student could, you know, go to a bunch of different specials on this day because there will be these different opportunities for specials. And we'd encourage them to attend too. But again, we don't have, we don't know what the home situation would be like.
Or if they'll be in a daycare, it's very interesting.
Right. And then counselors, OTPT, reading, speech, teachers, they would reach out directly to the families to schedule that time and work around whatever the schedule is. So that is really what it looks like, K through five. And like I said, middle school, high school is pretty straightforward because it's following the schedule. It's just a modified schedule, which we, the reason to modify the schedule is because even if you are eighteen years old, sitting in front of a computer from eight, or seven forty until, what? Three, or two thirty, it's a lot to ask at any point.
Yeah.
And as well, we want to make sure the teachers have planning time on these days because it's gonna be a lot of additional planning with these models than, than their custom.
OCS, currently right now, we're told by Dr. Gradshaw, Dr. Gradshaw, the OCS would be able to socially distance at the, at the center. So that OCS will run daily, so we'll be transporting our students, we'll be developing separate runs. I was told that he was going to allow students to drive, but then I just put on email that's saying that they don't have enough parking space, so we may not allow students to drive, so we may have to it just came up today.
I'm not sure if we've been through this yet. There was a section that talked about different tiers, like do you know what I'm talking about? It was like tier one and then tier two, and then tier three was that Apex model, but it was just, this information was just listed for the middle school and high school when I read it earlier. I'm not sure if it's still in the document.
Oh!
That's for the remotes, right?
Yeah, so that one consolidated and put in the district section.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Because it, it, I was interpreting it as that everybody, the secondary kids had a choice to remote or one hundred percent of the time.
Yeah, that was another piece that was drafted, but meaningful.
Really would hope that majority of our students would follow this model, because it's something we've been trying to do. Remote piece, those who stay home permanently, it's gonna be
I imagine that our high school at least, those teachers will probably try to keep will probably try to complete the curriculum. I mean, those kids can teach themselves the other two days, you know, they'll, they'll have assignments. I'm imagining that they'll be able
I think they're not trying to get us close, whether the state ultimately, I, I can't see the state requiring, you know, a kid to take the Earth Science reasons.
Right, but a kid might wanna take the AP whatever, and they might wanna try to keep up with
We're offering AP classes in a hybrid model, absolutely. They're being offered a hybrid model, they can't be offered in
You can't expect that. I can't imagine anybody would expect, would try to do that.
You can't expect, yeah, you know, you would think that.
So though, if we do get shut down again, say, like you say, you expected it in
Yeah, that's what, I, I, when I say expected, that's what is being predicted. I shouldn't
So if we have a second wave and we get shut down again, do you plan to go back then to the people who were enrolled and not on
Yeah, we have to see if they're, so are you gonna join us in a fully remote scenario? Are you gonna
No, I meant the other way around. So the kids who are currently attending
Yeah.
two days a week in remote learning, the hybrid model, when we go, if we have to go full remote, will we be trying to maintain the, the classes that they're currently in?
Yes, we will, yes.
They're not gonna go do that.
No, they're not gonna go, we will maintain the classes that are currently remote, but whether we will ask those students that are on Apex, because Apex or, or the other program, they, it, it does, it, it, state recognizes it as a legitimate program, so it does count.
It's the basics.
Yeah, the credit for a particular course. So it counts for Earth Science, it counts for Biology, it counts for Global Nature, it counts for World. So, but whether, whether those families wanna join in when they've been, hopefully been successful with using this model. Attendance, and we have to, so we do have to track attendance and chronic absenteeism through this process, which is why we, we do need, even on those off days, whether it's the green team on the Thursday, Friday, or the white the green group on the Thursday, Friday, or the white group on the Tuesday, Wednesday, there does need to be a email, a check-in, there, there needs to be engagement by the teacher with those students on those off days to count the attendance. It talks about in the plan that you have to engage those kids in a hybrid model on the, on the off days. So, there will be engagement.
So that could be as simple as they have like a five-question quiz that they're supposed to take on Google Docs or submit some kind of homework or
Yes.
Commission of work, you know, on students' attendance.
Right.
And then teachers will give feedback on a daily, effective daily basis or
We are expecting some kind of engagement on a daily basis between the kids that are not there and the teacher. Yeah, we're gonna, I'm
Some kind of, yeah.
Feedback on work that was, um, given to take home.
But that doesn't have to be live. It can be on a Google Classroom type of thing, or something.
And we talk about it there, asynchronous learning, and what we've just described, we talked about. Um. Heather, did you wanna talk a little bit? This just talks a little bit about, uh, you know, how, how our instructional platforms and.
Yeah, um, just basically what our students are being provided and, um, and what we've taught them to have. We, uh, Paul has said, and we're friends, we're really lucky that we were already wanting one.
So that does help us in this process, for sure. Um, in terms of, in, in terms of distribution, so the distribution of the technology that takes place, I would refer to the greens and whites who might be there on campus, we will need to create, um, you know, a pickup for the remotes, um, fully remotes, uh, that will probably, that will take place in that first week or into the second week. But, um, trying to get them in on those first weeks by building, what's we don't use for the remote.
And so the question, if, if teachers are reaching out to the students who are, well, they're in the training, that's my, will they get more reach out? Will it be the same teacher reaching out?
Yes, yes, yes. In fact, there's a special section on special education. Much of what we just described, um, is outlined in there.
I, uh, included, just this afternoon, uh, the roles for students, family, and teacher, teaching and learning expectations for each of those groups, for intervention for each of those groups, and, uh, Jennifer, there you go, about the IEP, five and four combination. Um, we talked here about the in-person model, hybrid model, and remote model, um, the importance of, uh, teaching to standards, um, addressing academic gaps and interventions.
We have a plan to, uh, we'll be rolling it out to the teachers tomorrow, offering them some, um, opportunity to do some planning in August. We're guided planning for this hybrid model. Uh, we can't require them to do that, but, uh, we have a little bit of care of ten dollars in professional development money. They do do that, and that will be led by Heather and Nick largely, um, in preparation, getting ready to teach in this hybrid model.
Are we still gonna do all the same universal screenings? I mean, that's the plan.
Yes.
We're gonna have to be flexible with that because, um, obviously, we have a green group and a white group.
What about the remote learners? Are they?
Great question. I don't think that their parents are going to be administering, administering, um, these web plus. Although, it is done on a device, so, uh, for students in, uh, really second grade. Although there is an oral reading, reading fluency that goes through, through third grade.
We'll have to work with those teachers that I mentioned, that we are, are gonna have to hopefully facilitate a hundred percent remote and see what we can do there.
How many K two students do you have? Do you know?
Uh, uh, about four hundred.
Charlie's gonna go door to door.
I've done it. Not door to door, but I'm.
A little less, a little less important, maybe three, six.
Um.
Can you utilize your support, not your support staff, but, um, your speech and reading people to do that initially?
For the remote people?
Well, some kids, for the fully remote you were talking about?
Yeah.
Okay, I don't know what children.
For the ones who are gonna be on campus, we're doing it.
We're doing.
Yeah.
And I, I imagine that programs are gonna be using guess some assessments to offer to, right?
Uh, the IELTS, I mean?
Yeah.
Uh, I really don't know that much about it yet. I, uh, just was learning about it today. So, that's the teaching and learning portion of things? Let me get into the special education.
Special education, which largely talks about, you know, following the IEPs that the, are self-contained, will be on campus for the four days, rather than just two on two. Um, it talks, you know, uh, it talks about the, the need to, um, synchronous, asynchronous, it talks about the need to maintain contact. When communication will be by seesaw, emails, school district website, phone calls, you know, the, 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 et cetera. I think, I, I was gonna, you know, largely run the, uh.
The AFE needs remotely.
CSE needs remotely, as she did, as she did it again this year last year.
Well, let me get into the, um, day posts with some recent findings, well, education in world languages, but really, these are English language learners. We only have a handful.
We have about twenty ELLs district-wide, and they'll be, uh, in excess learning for the, uh, two.
Um, and that's because we want them to maintain immersion in English.
Um, and, and.
But if we're gonna be teaching the same, that they're just gonna get repeated?
That really doesn't matter. There, because we're not a bilingual program, we're, uh, English is a second language program, so it might actually be better for them for learning language, because language is the priority in any ESL program versus content is the priority.
And, and they have an ESL teacher as well, uh, Jason Eats will be kind of collaborating.
And we have Katie Levin, who is with us, um, from Owen Boces.
OCSs.
Yep, to, to the, to.
But they have push-in and pull-out too, you know. In some instances, depending on their language, uh, their language needs, they could be pulled out of the teaching period today. They're off, a classroom, not working with their ELL teacher.
And did I hear that we're still working out what, what's going on in PE?
Uh, yes. Uh, it's, what's the name of that program? The PE program?
I don't remember.
It's a, it's a, it's a, it's an online software type PE program that we're working on.
The kids will be outside with bricks underneath their, uh, jacket.
But, uh, the, um, that's for the, I'm sorry, for the fully remote, we have that online.
No, I'm talking about the kids who are in school.
Oh, yeah, well, it's gonna have to be very limited, uh, it's gonna be twelve, to your part, it's gonna be a lot of calisthenics, it's gonna be a lot of individual stuff in place.
No basketballs.
No basketball, no.
Kids will be walking.
Uh, walking, uh, you know, it's.
Outside as much as possible.
You can line dance.
We are, we are gonna limit the use of equipment as much as possible. So it's gonna be very limited, uh, our, our PE program.
So the state, uh, the teacher and principal evaluation system is, um, is not something that's determined by the, your state department of education, it's, uh, determined by legislation.
It's still in effect, so we're gonna still have to observe teachers.
We got nothing else to do, right?
The state, the state is just, you know, they gotta throw that in again.
Right, so, yeah.
Do you, do you not think we're gonna be on it? I mean, we're gonna have to be, we gotta make sure that everybody is certified. So, you know, certification, incidental teaching, something, we gotta make sure everybody's appropriately certified. Um, you know, I, my guess is that people are, you know, obviously, in some school districts, to do the hybrid model, um, it's gonna require significantly more staff, you know, so they wanna make sure that they have certified people in there. It's gonna be very difficult to get substitute teachers, I'm sure. So it's.
I could.
They threw all that, they threw all that, yeah, so we basically said, well, yes, we're gonna.
That's it?
That's it. That's, those are the, those are the pieces of the plan, so.
Okay, I do have a question. Sorry.
Of course.
Crisis support, because you're gonna have families in crisis.
Yeah, we go back to the social emotional piece.
Okay, but I'm talking about crisis. I'm talking about abuse. I'm talking about those things. What are we gonna do? What, what does the district, we report it?
It is no different.
Okay. What are you gonna do in terms of, do you have a plan for how to assess whether that's going on? Okay, I just, I'm, it, I just think it's gonna, I think the potential for that.
No, no different than we assess now, you know, there are, there are very much certain signs that kids exhibit.
Right.
Outward, um, their social, their, their behavioral, um, you know, social workers pick up on that, counsel all the time, so we will see a majority of them on campus. I would assume that we will be watching for the same.
Yeah, yeah, yes.
Yeah, for sure.
Okay, are, are we gonna have our counselors and stuff have meaningful contact with their remote learners?
We plan on it, yeah. We still have to, um, you know, in that social emotional piece, we talk about that, uh, but we have to, obviously, need to then get that down into specifics.
They did during the whole closure this last time as well, yes.
So, um, as you can probably imagine, um, there are probably other ideas out there that, you know, people might have about it, but we felt, uh, but, I mean, there were routine administrators and early forenurses, um, you know, that this was the best case scenario we could develop. And I will say, um, you know, families are not happy with it. Um, I'm not happy with it. It's not school. It's not what we're accustomed to. Um, the unfortunate part is, there's nowhere you can go and not get it, because everybody else is doing it in some fashion or another, you know, it's not like you can. So you can either, you can either try to work with us, you wanna go a hundred percent remote, um, or you try to develop and work with us in the hybrid model. Um, or you can try to, you know, there's online schools, you can go to, there's America High School, you can, I mean, there's lots of other things you can do, or you can homeschool.
Are you anticipating children falling off the radar?
Well, um, we were pretty good about that during the March through June, and we were doing a lot of home visits, so I, when kids start to fall off the radar, we're gonna be aggressive. We have to, we have to aggressively go after them. I, I can't begin to tell you how many home visits Patty and I did, knocking on doors. Hey, your kids, check in, where are they at, you know? So we will continue in a, in a very aggressive way. I thought we did a good job with it.
Yeah, I may have missed, missed it in here when I read it at home. Um, there, in the beginning, they were talking about cohorts within the building for the days that the kids are here, where the kids don't move, the teachers move, or. How are they, how are they?
Decided against that because, um, you know, we're gonna mass them up, and we felt that, um, to, to a certain, to a certain extent, they are co-horted at the, at the elementary level, because they're, they're individual teacher, you know, uh, but six through twelve, if we're gonna cohort them and, and, and bring the, and they can't get out of that room.
Middle school's pretty well co-horted too, it's just that they.
Yeah.
Moving from, all these kids go to that.
On the same hallway, so to speak. Cohorting was more for the social, uh, the, the contract, contact tracing more than anything else. Um, I think that's, that was the real reason behind the cohort, uh, suggestion that is in some of the documents.
Well, it's also like, if you, you have kids going into, like, art rooms and stuff, so they said, if you can't thoroughly disinfect between.
We feel we will be able to. Feel we will be able to.
Well, they're also gonna have individual supplies, correct?
Correct.
Right, so that, no, it is, it will, it will likely limit some of the activities.
Yeah.
So, my friends, that's the draft, um, of our plan, and, uh, I appreciate, um, you listening, I appreciate your excellent questions. Um, you know that obviously, we're meeting with our LPUT and, uh, our aides and, our teacher aides and, and others tomorrow, uh, to discuss this and go over it.
Do you have any feeling how they're going to respond at this point?
Well.
Okay.
Hopefully, well.
Well, I just wondered if any of them were involved in that.
Um, to the extent that I've been meeting along with the, their leadership and, uh, we've been talking quite a lot about where we're at with this. Um, I mean, there's, there's nothing here that we're asking of them that, that isn't being asked of every other teacher in, um, New York State.
Sure.
The world.
Especially.
Yeah, so, um, and I think we're trying to be reasonable, but, and we won't get. I want them to be on board with the plan. As I said to Mr. Coppins, Mr. President, I said, I know I'm gonna, I, when I roll this out to the families, I know I'm gonna hear this. I don't need to hear it from both of them, so I'd really like to have at least the one, the most important, I mean, obviously, the teacher's the most important piece in this puzzle. You know, and the, and the families, of course, but in order for the, the plan to work well, the teacher's really have to.
Engage them.
Yeah, engage them, you know? So I'm gonna try to, we wanna try to be as user-friendly with that as possible. Because it, this is a significant change, no teacher, no admitted, this is not what you got into.
That was my, yeah.
It's not what you signed up for, you know, it's not what, it's not what more, it's definitely a different look at work. And so, you know, we, as, as much as it's not what families signed up for, no one's, no one's signed up for this, school is school. School is what we always expected. Um, you know, I, I do need the most, you know, it's often said that, you know, child success is really related to the quality of the teacher in front of them. Um, and that's for sure, uh, because teachers, it really gets kids an unbelievable experience, you know, if they go around, yeah, many, many do. Um, and so, we definitely need our teachers and our aides around on the child board. So hopefully, it'll go well tomorrow. Um, I mean, it is what it is, you know, like, oh, I just, I'm, I'm there, listen, we're trying our best. Um, we're, this is not, I'm not the type of person, and I certainly haven't been the type of person who is endemic, that says, no, this is what I'm doing, I'm not, I, I, I definitely monitor, adjust. Would you agree?
You have been, yes, yes.
I would be a monitor and adjuster.
You've been quite.
So we'll monitor and adjust. We gotta monitor and adjust.
There is no way around it, you need to be flexible right now, because, uh, nobody has a crystal ball. So if you'd rewind within six months ago, we, we couldn't predict it here, we are in it now, so there's no way to predict where we're gonna be.
That's for sure. So that, my friends, is the Lewis and Porter draft of the reopening plan. Um, we will continue to hone it, uh, the rest of this week. Um, and we'll have a final version up, Thursday's our big, big final push day after talking with the teachers. Uh, Heather, Nick, and I will, Patty will be hunkered down, going to finalize it.
We'll send out a white cup of smoke.
Right. And it's submitted. That will be submitted by a committee first, and then we'll start to roll it out. I will, I will ask you to approve it, um, just from a legal standpoint, um, you know, obviously, if it has borne proof of all, if someone were to roll a demo by, you know.
Would you anticipate, um, sending out a families?
Well, I'm going to, um, on Friday, uh, at our submission, I'm going to say, you know, this is what we've submitted, and this is the plan that we have in place, you know.
So by, our families will have it Friday?
Yes.
Do you anticipate it will be over with the state?
Um, according to what I've been told by our, the other, um, or in the conversation with the other, the state's not necessarily gonna deny, you know, they said the same, they're not gonna deny any plans.
It says that right on here.
Like, you, you just have to make sure your plan goes well in regulations.
Correct. And quite frankly, Charlotte, if you think about it, if you're, if you're being asked to submit building, like, you're, all you're doing is checking a box saying, yes, I, I assure you that I'm, I'm doing all of this. Uh, and then you have to, I mean, there's ten thousand buildings in the state, more. So how do they look at every building plan? Seven hundred districts, and then, but then it's built, you have to submit building level.
Right, you submit.
I mean, in, in, in New York City alone, there's thousands and thousands of buildings.
We've written ours, as you saw, in such a way that, um, it's a unified plan, so there's not going to be a separate PEC plan, a separate IEC plan, and so forth. It's the district plan, you can see all the plans within that plan. Thank you very much, Mr. Seri.
You are very welcome.
We'll move on to district preparations. You wanna do the board of members?
Well, I'm doing now, or?
Doesn't matter, I mean, whatever you're doing. Would you like to do it now?
Oh, no.
Sure, why don't we do a now? Okay, so who was, I think Jenna was first on the list. Yes, all right, Jenna.
Okay, um, thank you for presenting the thorough, uh, school reopening plan, and all I could say is yes, there's gonna be unknowns, but glad you all handled it, and I wish everyone a smooth transition for the upcoming school year.
Uh, Charlotte. Um, I think you did a great job on the plan. I anticipated that it would be a lot of work. It looks like you've done a very nice job with that. You've addressed many of the issues, and I think you are, you're very receptive to the support and the ground and the questions. to the support and the ground and questions. I do believe that it will be a flexible plan, but it needs to be under the circumstances, and I hope that everybody can support.
Jenna?
All right. I would kind of agree with both Jenna and Charlotte, I think that was a lot of hard work, but I mean, that plan, a lot of time, a lot of effort from everyone, but I think if it's pretty thorough, we're not gonna make everyone happy, but we gotta do the best we can.
And, yeah, I think the, the thing that really strikes me about the plan when I first read it before tonight and then your presentation, is that it's focused on having our students learn and continue what may have not happened as well as it might have during the spring shutdown. There was not enough, as much synchronous learning, so I, I'm optimistic that it will be really good for the students across all four buildings, across all grades. It's great. It's a lot of work.
Eddie? We anticipate what everybody else said, it's obviously it's been a lot of work, a lot of that went into this, I think that we all agree that the best place for students is school, but when it's not possible for them to be in school safely, we have to do the best we can. And as long as, I think, we're moving our children forward, we're not gonna be perfect, we're not gonna be able to meet all the metrics and the goals that we're used to meeting every year, but it's an unequal situation, and we never got ourselves in, so we just have to keep them moving forward, and then figure it out when it's all over with, without ever getting, getting all caught up.
That's true.
I, I just, I go with what everybody else said, that I think you can see the blood sweats, tears that run into this, and I think the biggest, most important thing is you guys are all flexible and adaptable, and you're constantly adjusting your expectations and what you're doing, which is the only way it can be, right? So I appreciate all the hard work you guys did. Thank you.
All right, so we'll move on to district operations. I'd like to move to approve F1, the minutes from the June 23 regular board meeting, can I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Yes.
So, Carrie. I would like to move to approve M2, the minutes from the organizational meeting on July 1st, can I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Yes.
So, Carrie. I would like to move to approve M3, the minutes from the work session on July 15th, can I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Yes.
So, Carrie. I would like to move to approve NF1 through NF5, the financial consent agenda by the administration, can I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Yes.
So, Carrie. There is no old business, so we'll move on to new business. I would like to move to approve NA1, the second readings of the policies of the 8000s, can I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Yes.
So, Carrie. I would like to move to approve NA2, the confidential employee working agreements, can I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Yes.
So, Carrie. I would like to approve NA3, the approval to extend the personal touch food service in child nutrition contract, can I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Yes.
So, Carrie. I would like to move to approve NA4, the approval for the disposal of textbooks, can I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Yes.
So, Carrie. I would like to move to approve NA5, the approval for new textbooks, can I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Anything from Heather, anything, anything to?
The ELA textbook, the books for multi-ELA at the high school.
At the high school.
Yeah.
Okay. All those in favor?
Yes.
So, Carrie. I would like to move to approve NA6, the approval of the facility service agreements, can I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes.
All those in favor?
Yes.
So, Carrie. I would like to move to approve NA7, the approval to fund the tax sorcery funds, can I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Yes.
So, Carrie. I would like to move to approve NA8, the approval to fund the repair reserve fund, can I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Yes.
So, Carrie. I would like to move to approve NA9, the approval of the Buffalo construction contract, can I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Yes.
So, move. And I have, I would like to move to approve NA10, the approval of the community education program contract, and I have a second.
Second.
Is this just being put on hold?
No, actually, it's coming together nicely online, okay? We're gonna have, I think, a fairly impressive course offering out totally online.
Really?
Yeah. Anita's doing her nice job, and many, many of the instructors said, well, you know, they go on custom Zoom, and we are actually going, we're purchasing with those Zooms, so we'll have some ability to help them as well. But yeah, it's just, I think, she said we're up to about 46 course offerings online, so.
Wow. All those in favor?
Yes.
So, Carrie. Now we'll move on to people personnel, I would like to.
You do.
Oh, sorry. I'd like to move to approve NA11, the approval of the 2020 to 2025 strategic plan, can I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Yes.
Now we'll move on to people personnel. I'd like to move to approve FP1, the recommendations for CSE placements and amendments, can I have a second? Any discussion?
Yes.
I think we have my question.
All those in favor?
Yes.
So, Carrie. I would like, and now we'll move on to the personal consent agenda, I would like to move to approve the personnel consent agenda for tonight, can I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Yes.
Was Emily, Emily Sharp on?
Yes, she was on here, she was told that.
Shannon, was Shannon on Zoom?
She was told that it's going to be next month.
What about Laura McLaughlin?
No.
Okay, well.
She, she, it is on here, but not on the Zoom.
Right, right, no, I, I was gonna say something, I was gonna say something about the one, Emily's been a really good student, Laura I had a chance to speak to on the phone, I was very impressed with her, she comes to us from adult services, is an OT with significant experience, but she is a former report student, because she wants to, she's willing to take us to the point five, and she's excited. Two, two nice spiders.
Nice. Did I have a second?
You did.
I did. No more discussion, all those in favor?
Yes.
So, Carrie. I would like to move to enter into a second session to be, to convene to review the building level emergency plans, can I have a second? That one's in the personnel, it's not right, this NABA.
Yes.
Yes.
They're all, they're all there.
Yeah.
All together.
So we should, this should.